All right, first on the agenda is you all have copies of the paving list.
You still can't put anything in your garage.
The paving list, you all have copies of this. This is based on Joe's estimate of the roads and the cost of money on the ground. Anyway, if the council has no problem with the listings, then we can allow them to get this. So, the council.
Well, I always trust Joe in these things that, I mean, there's a lot. If we had more money, we'd do a lot more, but these are the top price. These are, in Joe's opinion, and I think he's the expert, the worst of the most traveled. Does that be fair, Joe?
Yes.
Is that kind of what you look at?
And, well, there's a couple of things that I look at, and it's also the number of people that use it.
Right.
And it's how heavy the pedestrian traffic. So, there's a number of things that go into the process of trying to decide.
So, we're actually doing spring the whole way up, from Jefferson to Altona?
Yes.
Big down alley, you have the whole way up?
Well, not the whole way up.
At least that block.
That's pretty bad if you look at that. It's kind of been the downtown area.
They're tearing the cement up.
Pardon?
Isn't that cement?
Not this lower part. Up above is concrete, and we're not going that high.
So, this concrete, to begin with, these step with the concrete?
We simply wouldn't be able to afford to do that. We would overlay that in blacktop if, you know, we ever chose to do a road like that. That would be the only street you could ever get done.
Right, yeah.
The thing is, Mayor, and I have to comment, we, for a number of years, we have been paving with the same budget, and in some cases, even a little bit less than previous years, and the cost of paving, you know, every year just keeps going up and up. So, we are going less and less each year.
Is it all liquid fuel money, or is there...
No, this is our money. This is money that's budgeted. This is not, be confused with the CDBG project out there in Fifth Ward, but this is what the city manager had felt that, you know, we could afford in our budget this year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, the CDBG money, is that the liquid fuel fund?
No.
What about that?
This is it.
This is it.
Yeah, this is liquid fuel. It's not CDBG money.
Okay.
CDBG money, the problem with that is they, the street's got to be in such a large criteria that you're not able to wish you could do it.
Now, I understand, yeah. Okay, so this is the liquid fuels?
Right.
I don't have any questions, any mail?
This is basically, I'd say, more for information. Nobody has a problem with it going forward. I mean, we've already got permission to go to the venue, so we'll start the venue process. Next is, you know, Joe's looking at this too. This is a change of, we keep losing the traffic control equipment on the corner of Ligonier and Main. So, they're suggesting, and I agree, to move the trucks, have them turn sooner on, these are trucks that come up Ligonier, not Manuel's Ligonier, have them turn sooner. And Joe was suggesting Cedar because Cedar's a wide enough intersection.
Is that what's happening there? The trucks are getting...
Yeah, they're taking the full line.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
They're still, supposedly the back, they're probably still, if they go that way, they're probably still going to pull out. But eventually, we're looking to move the traffic control equipment closer to the bank, so at least they won't lock out the traffic control access.
Right.
They're still not fully on, but...
I think what happens over the years...
I didn't realize that was what was happening.
I think, actually, it was 11 months ago that we just put it back up. I think what's happening is a lot of your manufacturers here in Latrobe, they no longer do their own trucking, and the same driver might not be at the same plant two times. I would like to see those leaving, like Lehigh, those leaving the Plastics, Carpenter, use, get them on Cedar Street, whether they have to travel north or south to get there, go up to Lincoln. Now, you know, heading for Route 22 now, they, there should be no problem. And really, with what we're going downtown, do we really want big trucks downtown anymore anyhow?
That's the question. If you're going past the British style trucks, you want the truck to...
Right.
Yeah, it's probably better to keep them on.
And so, that turn is pretty good, and then the turn at the top there by Dec Hockey's okay, Joe?
A lot better than this one.
Cedar Street's wider.
Yeah, I know Cedar Street's wider. I'm just thinking, I'm just wondering about the other corners, okay?
It's a thought. I mean, let council review it.
That would help Main Street too, because that's terrible up on Main and Lincoln. You know, that intersection with the truck, you know, you have so many people confused at that intersection, where they're in the right lane and they're turning left. I can't, I don't...
Well, you would still get truck traffic at Main and Lincoln because you would get the truck traffic that's coming in Lloyd Avenue and up Main up that state, right?
Yeah.
So, you would still get them.
And how do you police that? I mean, you just put up truck signs? I mean, what do you do if somebody turns, what if you, truck, trailer truck doesn't make, doesn't go on Cedar and comes down and turns on...
It's over the size and limits and...
They get fined?
They get fined. You gotta, you gotta police their responsibility.
I think we would try to also get the news out to your Latrobe Plastics, to your Carpenter, anybody like that, you know, to their loading docks, the brewery, you know.
I would imagine the people that aren't familiar with certain areas are looking for those signs anyway. Truck drivers?
Probably. Weight limits, yes.
So, that'll be a motion to advertise for the August meeting. The next one is Bank Lane, the Bank Lane, of course, is over here by WCC, in between the railroad and College.
You need to know that's a call.
Then that's in between College and the railroad tracks over there. And it's the one that goes past the Jipperville, you know, that. Right, we've had it closed for quite a while because WCC was using the Parker equipment to access when they go into the pickup. Recently, I guess, some of the horses have been moved, taken, stolen, or whatever it is.
All of the above.
Yeah. So, the question is, what's council want to do? Do they want to either reopen it? Do they want to close it for emergency vehicles only? You know, what's council wishes as far as, I know that's a shortcut, and I know people use it, and, you know, might forget, my very personal opinion, because I think it's dangerous going past the Jipperville. I can't believe that someone's been run over coming out of that building, but that's my, that's my personal opinion.
Well, I'm concerned about the increased traffic too. You're gonna have there pedestrian and otherwise want the college open. My personal opinion is that we should close it. Emergency vehicles only.
And I live down there, so I see a totally different, if you come up that street, of course, the traffic is spilling from Jefferson down towards the brewery, okay? If you're two cars behind, someone's making a turn or going straight, you never get that light. Two cars, maybe three, might get through that light going from Jefferson down towards our building. If they quit that street, I guarantee you it's gonna happen. People are gonna cut through Community College, go around, and out. I will bet you any money that is exactly what will happen down there.
I don't know if they can, is it...
You can, it's probably up there.
Yeah, I mean...
And that's what will happen.
Well, the college will then, I mean, the college will have to police that.
Again, it's council wishes, you know, that's what council wants to do. It was open for a long period of time. It's been closed for almost a year now.
And the residents down there constantly complain that you can't get around. If you come from there, you get this light, then you come up half a block, you get another light, then you turn up onto Main Street, you get another light. It takes you four lights to go around the block here.
Well, I mean, if you're going to First Ward, you would just turn at the first light, so you only have two.
I know, it's hard to get out, it's just hard to turn.
No, I'm talking about, if you wanted to go to...
Trying to get out of First Ward.
Yeah, trying to get out of First Ward. Trying to get out of First Ward and go to the dentist office on Deep West Street. Takes you four lights, well, I do want, but, I mean, it takes you four lights to get there. I mean, I know that sounds crazy, but it does. Well, I mean that, but it's just, I mean, I just think it, I just think it...
The problem that I've had in the past...
People walk it that way, and they'll get down anyway.
Is they'll actually move the barriers and sometimes take them or destroy them. So, I put some concrete Jersey barriers in there during the construction, and we were asked to move them, and we did. If I have concrete, if I put concrete Jersey barriers back, then we're not providing access for emergency vehicles.
Well, couldn't you get a chain that crosses over with a stop sign inside, but with a lock that the fire trucks or the police could unlock if they need to get an emergency vehicle back there? Instead of a Jersey barrier?
Don't we have the issue as to whether or not we even own it? I mean, it's not even, I mean, part of it, I mean, there's still the battle between the local sovereign that...
You know, the railroad says that their road, even though it's been in the city books since the 1800s, you know, the argument about whether, you know, we adverse taking versus adverse taking, that argument, and Representative Joe Trapp is trying to help us work with the railroad. We met the railroad rather unsuccessfully. I think the level we were talking to wasn't able to make a decision, so...
But we don't have it, do we have it posted that it's emergency traffic only right now? And that we just have the, we can just have the horses up there, right?
Well, we had horses when we had it signed, but it, over and over again, they keep disappearing.
But even if you just Jersey barrier to one end, that would keep people from going through. You could still access it from the other end for emergency vehicles.
I would like to at least leave it closed until we see what happens once WCC gets removed.
Again, that's...
What do you guys, what do you...
So, the council.
I mean, I grew up in First Ward, and I occasionally use that road, but I think it's an accident waiting to happen, because when you come out there, it's really hard to see too if you're gonna go left to make out of that. Yeah, you really have to get off pretty far. If you're going down into First Ward, come on.
The traffic... I always used that. I miss that road terribly. And there's a lot of people down there that live down there, they're the same way. They miss that, that terribly.
Gary?
I see no reason to go shortcut. That's my opinion. I mean, how long is a red light? I don't know. I don't use it. I never use it.
Well, let's just, do we just hold off until, do we have to decide right now? Can we keep it closed at least until after the college is open and then let's see, you know?
You really shouldn't go to work today anyway. You could bring it up, I'm gonna bring it up to the meeting in a little while, but that's up to, again, I'm looking for, I'm looking for direction to council. You know, we have it locked off, and people are taking the barrier down. You know, Jim's reluctant to enforce it because he really hasn't, he hasn't known how to enforce it, you know?
Boomer?
College can be a danger?
Yeah. They're opening, I mean, whatever their fall term starts, August something, and they tentatively have a date for the, for them cutting, but until they announce, until they announce it, everything's on track for their fall schedule, so. Okay, let's, let's...
Do you want us to barrier it up for now until, you know, until the council, you know, everybody here to discuss what you want to do?
I think it's just fall, it's your idea. Let's let it get open first and then see what you have traffic wise.
I have no reason to say what I'm gonna do.
If you decide to close it, I would suggest what Joe said, put a concrete barrier so they can't steal it.
Right.
If you're gonna keep it open, then keep it open, but if you're gonna close it, don't use these temporary barriers.
And I said, you can close the one end.
I think you have to close the one end, because you have to make sure you're well at best for...
Well, if you close it one end, then they can still get a fire, you know?
Right, right, right. And the Quidlue, you need Altona's best Quidlue.
And even, and even the railroad, maybe the service there, you know, their side, they can get out from that end. I mean, it's still kind of up for emergency. No one would just try to get through, you know?
Which end, which end is everyone thinking should be buried, barrier?
I'm thinking the end on Jefferson Street.
The end on Jefferson?
Yeah. I would think it would be probably easier to park it in the other way. Johnny, Lee?
We can ask to get a preference. Put it out and just put Jersey barriers up to them.
Okay, thank you. Went, took a little walk this morning before the start of the shift, and I was talking to the guys down at the bridge, and they said that they can't see that there's more than one or two more days of work there.
Oh, no, they should have it. Is that Mission Road?
Do they think before the fourth?
One or two more days.
He told me he sees about one or two more days. Well, I don't, I don't know.
We're preparing an announcement to go on the radio and in the trailer door announcing the fact that Mission Road is open, transfer station is not easy to get to, and talking about changing hours, and I think it's been the Saturday hours.
I was up there two Saturdays ago. I'm telling you what, it's crazy. It's crazy. And that's without a lot of, I mean, my brother-in-law came in and helped me move some stuff, and he lives in Marysville, and he's like, I didn't even know this was here. He's been in the family for 30 years. I mean, people don't know it's there, but yet it's, it's Saturday, it was crazy. I'm guessing it's like that every Saturday.
How long hasn't been there?
Forty years.
Oh, that long?
Yeah, we're thinking now a little bit on Saturday from 7:00 to 1:30. We discussed it with the union, and they're okay with it, and we've, you know, we talked about the scheduling and stuff with...
What's the time now? And they close it?
Yeah, 11:30.
The scale goes up to 11:30?
Yeah. So, I mean, we're gonna see whether that allows more people to come up, more of a lot of the same number of people to come up later in time. I don't know, you know?
I mean, you know, if you work full-time, if one is a 2:30 on, on, the scale goes to 2:30 during the week, right? Two during the week?
Yeah, I know, because I'm taking stuff, and it's, that's top.
Well, that's what we're looking at. We're obviously trying to find ways to, you know, some of the problem is limited resources. You know, some of the problem, we have to see whether it's work well. You know, you kind of like try a couple of little steps, and if it looks like it helps them, try a couple more steps. First step is Saturday. Down the road, if that seems to be working, maybe we'll get like on Monday, Wednesday, or Wednesday, Friday later, you know, shift. And we have, the unions agreed to, we have it been on track, so we can do that, it's just a matter of scheduling. The biggest problem is we only have one part-timer, and that's, that creates a problem on there, but, you know, plus four, though. Biggest steps.
Do you want to talk about... Oh, yeah, the chapter 256, vehicles and traffic. I think council's aware of the problem we've had up on Grand Street with vehicles that are being repaired, being parked in the roadway and taking up the parking slots. So, I talked it over with Ann, and I think what I'm gonna recommend to council is an ordinance that will do three things. First, it will eliminate prohibited parking on the south side of Grand Street from Anderson up to East Harrison. Right now, that is prohibited parking, so we'll release that sign. Secondly, we would create permit parking for every property owner between Anderson and East Harrison with a limit of two permits per property, okay? So, that means you can't park more than two cars if you're any given property owner. If you are, they're gonna get taken. And then the third thing would be to raise the fine from $15 to $30.
And what's predating, what is predating?
This is the place on Grand Street, the automobile repair place that had the gasoline stuff, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, where their vehicles are occupying, you can only park on the north side of the street, and there's very few spaces for the people who live there.
And it's grandfathered in that area, right?
Yes, but the business itself is grandfathered, but there, and we've tried the 48-hour notice given if the vehicle is uninspected or not registered, but they play musical cards. Once you give them notice, that car has moved into the garage, another car comes out, and it, you know, that's not helpful. So, this is a recommendation that I would make, the council might get, just like we had up near the hospital, permit parking, everybody gets two. Okay, that would be probably a motion at this meeting to advertise for the August meeting.
And last is the, we've been asked again to join the hazardous waste from Westland Cleanways, sponsor the household hazardous waste collection, and it's something that's done every year, but, you know, if council's comfortable, we'll put it on the agenda for two weeks.
That sounds good, Mike. Anybody else have anything? That's all, that's all we have on the agenda?
Yeah, $600.
That's what it costs?
Yeah. Yeah, it's something to do with, well, we're gonna speak to the cost of, you know, unexpected costs. We have a $4700 bill for, well, that's a paid expense, but, for repairing the HVAC system. Now, check, potentially, we could have to buy a new HVAC.
I know, we talked about that.
Yeah, that's, that's, we've done after years, but the repair that we're doing is a leak, and I verified with the, with Mullins, that this repair will be part of a new HVAC system, so we're not wasting money. I didn't want to repair something that's been turned around and...
Do we have a quote on that?
I have it down there somewhere. I have to look at, I think they put it back to Long Island.
I mean, is that something we should start saving for?
They have to, you know, we're gonna, we need to put it in the...
I mean, what are we looking at, like ballpark? Do you remember?
I don't remember. I need to quote a number, see so many...
Do you remember, Joe, here?
You know, I can provide that to council, but I, you know, something around the, you know, save for...
Is that why it was like a million degrees here the last month?
No, that was a certain break, we were stripped downstairs. Wide trip.
Someone's playing a game with that.
Good enough, good enough.
Madeline, anything else? Mary?
David was taking a vacation for the summer.
Oh, okay. So, the meeting is allowed, you changed, you decided on it? Yeah, I think that's probably what I was doing.
It'd be important to put it on the sign on Friday. She'll put that, the change on the sign.
Oh, I got it, yeah.
Hope this is ongoing, you get people...
A little bit, you know, it's been slower than I thought it would hope, but we get a little micro, please. I think it's kind of good on, and it'll look better. Aaron?
Look, the only thing I have is, I've been walking every morning, and believe me, you get a rude awakening to walk around this town. I mean, a rude awakening. Copper units, not taking this off. Cans from here and there and everywhere, and I'll tell you, I have to, I have to really comment on, on Jim. He, if not one time, he will walk anywhere and not just sit over and pick something up.
Jim? Madeline?
No, no, no.
Boomer?
No, from, from, oh dear Lord, from the development...
Open Act, oh yeah, yeah.
Open Act, it just went off, off of my head, but I'll tell you, that man, he will stop, pick up a can, he'll stop. I don't care what it is, a piece of paper. I've never seen anyone say, oh, their time.
If everybody was to be like that, we're really not gonna be now.
And I even thought, like, walking, you know, why don't we get, like, more garbage containers, like, around Ligonier Street, Diamond Street? And I just think we simply ought to start and force some people, you know, getting their grasses cut and keeping, I mean, I never thought I would ever see garbage cans on front people's porches, containers. I never thought I'd ever see that. I never thought I'd see blankets hanging on someone's back porch forever. You know, 30, 40, twice it was, I mean, in that park. I just, I just gonna think that that, that should, you know, I really don't, especially down in a lot of, like, areas, I should say, like, down or over a hall.
And the residential...
It's just, it's just awful.
Well, I know, and, you know, she, I mean, people got complaints, and then I know she takes a ride around, and I know people, if Joe says anything, I mean, we let her know. The problem is, in my mind, and correct me if I'm wrong, is I just don't think our ordinance has enough teeth.
I don't either.
Well, the hard part is how do you, how do you find somebody if you don't see them drop that can or that piece of paper?
Well, I'm not, I don't think she's talking about that so much.
I'm talking about, that's yours. I'm talking about garbage cans, garbage cans, couches from people...
Past the tennis courts, hooking up the junkyard, but before the junkyard, the fence that's been laying down for...
Yeah, that fence has been downed, I don't know.
Definitely, she's talking about that and just littering, but, yeah, I mean, you know, we've talked about taking a look at those entrances, and I do think we've toughened them up a little bit.
Yeah, basically, what we try to say, there's a provision in our ordinance that you cannot store outside, personal property that doesn't belong outside. So, if you have a picnic table, you can leave that in your yard, but you can't put a couch in the yard, because that's an inside piece of property. People can be fined for doing that, for storing in an open area horse crap. Well, you know, the biggest problem is, what's one man's treasures and another man's trash, and how do you, how do you define that, describe it? But, no, our ordinance was improved to prohibit that.
Well, you know, if you just go down, if you would be walking from here, and people want to all walk down the Gino's, and you're all chit-chatting, don't pay attention to what's going on. There's a wall there that has fallen onto the sidewalk. Now, who is supposed to take care of that? Christ bless from Gina, is that big yellow house? Part of the wall has fallen out, it's standing on a sidewalk.
Joe?
Part of it's on the sidewalk.
That's a property owner.
Yeah, but the property owner should be notified that they have to take it. And that's the problem we run into, is finding out. Yes, Joe?
Actually, I thought the ordinance that Jim brought up tonight was going to deal with this and not just Grand Street. One of the problems we have around this town is jump cars, and the police chief and Ann Powell can't do anything about it. There are cars with, it's been sitting for two, three, four years. Ann gives them a notice to get it out of the yard, and she has folders, she'll show you. They'll park it out front. Police officer will get down, or Beth will get down and put a notice on it...
And they'll move it back to the yard.
They'll put it back in the yard. Some of these vehicles got 2010, 11, 12 stickers on them.
Can't we tell, can't we tell them, I mean, how do we fix that, Jim?
I thought that's one of the things you were addressing on this.
On, on... Not the notice, because of playing musical cars, that's, we're trying to get around that.
Yeah, but we're only talking about Brent. I'm talking all over Latrobe.
Well, I thought that was the other thing we talked about last month, about getting it off, saying that we're not going by the state's laws, remember, about how these people are...
Yeah, that's, that we're now trying to get, you're right, Karen, we're trying, trying to get it past the point of someone interpreting it to say you've got to have a moving car. But, you know, to me, I think we need to look at that ordinance, strengthen it to the point that if you get a notice to move, it's got to be moved out of the city, period.
I mean, you know, if, if Ann cites, some, her sighting has to say, you know, something to the fact that if you move it to the street, you're gonna be fined. And if, and if Boomer does it, and they move it in the yard, you're gonna be fined. Something so that they can't keep playing this ridiculous game, or that, or basically, this, you know, this has to be out of the city limits by X, by timeframe, or you're gonna be fined.
A law that you're not allowed to have, it seems to me.
Well, on, on the property, I think the way our ordinance reads, if you put it under tarp, then, then you're okay, or if you put it in a garage or somewhere, be closed.
See, that's where I think that has to be strengthened, because, you know, you put it under tarp, someone, I mean, if you walk around, you see somebody out at their house, it's just beautiful, everything's nice and neat, and there's a junk car covered up with tarp, and I mean, it is.
Can't we make it, because it has to be enclosed in a garage and not tarped?
Or else it's gonna be towed?
Well, part of the issue you get, get in cases like this is, where is the harm? You know, what are we eliminating? Because when you start getting into aesthetics... Because when you start getting into aesthetics, the courts get a little more reluctant with the courts.
The harm is...
If there's a safety issue, then, then that's one.
The harm is, the harm is, A, that I, the harm is safety and, and increasing the property value.
Right.
Of, of the neighboring property. What's that?
It aids in making it more difficult to snow, blow, and salt during the winter months.
Oh, I can understand.
You can't street sweep. Usually anywhere around that car looks very bad on that whole block that's been sitting there, because that's where everything's tied.
The roadway's not usually the problem, in, in terms of keeping them off, because you do have safety issues, you have street sweepers. It's when they put something on their own property, in their own lot...
Disagree. Disagree.
What?
I can, I can take a ride at night, probably show you 25, 30 cars on the street.
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying, I understand that, the courts, I think, would enforce ordinances that restrict that, because there are safety issues of cars being in the street. But if you take that same car and put it in your backyard and cover it with a tarp...
Jim, here's what I say. Let's do what's in the best interest of the residents and clean this crap off, and then if somebody wants to take us to court, then we'll fight it out and see how the court rules. I mean, what's the worst-case scenario? We lose, and we gotta let people put cars back in their yards? I mean, I, I would err on the side of being, you know, stringent and say, you know, if you're gonna have an unregistered car, an unlicensed car, it's got to be in a garage. It can't be tarped, it can't be, you know, it can't be sitting there rotten, you know, it's got to be tarped and, or it's got to be enclosed.
Right.
And, and something that says, if you, you know, if, if you're, if, if you can't move it from the street to the, to the yard.
Isn't there a state law that says any vehicle that you pass, it has to be registered and insured and...
Well, if you want to operate, but these, these are vehicles that just sit there.
Yeah, the thing is, if you have somebody that's rebuilding a car, for example, and they have it under tarp, and they're in process of rebuilding, it's not inspected, it's not gonna be inspected for a long period of time, but that's a process of rebuilding a car, or, you know, restoration or whatever.
Yeah, if people want to do that, they either need to get up, they need to get up.
Well, I'm just saying, that's what, that's what you're gonna bump into, you're bumping the people that are trying to restore vehicles, should they have a bar port, or should they have, I can't argue that point. I mean, if they're gonna restore, it's easier if it's under, under roof.
Right, right.
But, you know, I'm saying, that's, that's again the...
But see, the thing, the, but the issues we're having, Wayne, aren't about people restoring cars.
I understand.
Right, Joe? They're just people that don't get rid of it, whatever it is. So, I, I, I would say let's toughen that one up as tough as we can, and then if at some point we have to back off later.
Okay.
You guys agree?
Definitely, like I said, if they're unregistered, you should be able to get rid of them, whether on the street or in the, if they're unregistered in the fact that, and they're not covered, they're definitely, we should be able to aggressively, I'm, I'm loving this fellow, it's a favor, I'm not, I'm telling him, so I'm not sure, you know, what the difference is here.
Well, here, the, the problem is usually the 48-hour's notice. You give them notice to cure the defect, and they do, but they create another defect. They move it from the street to yard. It's cured in the street, but now you have a problem in the yard. You give that a 48-hour's notice...
We need to close that loophole, I guess, and toughen that up. Keep walking, Madeline.
Oh, my gosh.
You know, she raises an interesting question.
What's happened?
Forgetting, like, the stuff in the yards and all that, but if you're looking at just simple trash, cans on the ground or whatever, why couldn't we within our community do what Pendot does across the state? Dot the road, dot the block, you know, maybe some recognition to citizens who do a good job of doing that.
Yeah.
That could get rid of a lot of stuff, you know, once a month.
If you purchase a sign, who's responsible for that block?
No more signs, though, more signed out. I do, I do notice more of the new street signs popping up, I saw one up on Fairmont.
Those are the signs I mean.
Yeah, oh, oh, yeah.
Are they established?
How many, do you, do you have any more to put up, or are they all off there?
And within the next couple of days, I'll be able to put two more up, getting the, the signs red, there, there was a problem with, whenever manufactured. And then Jared and I, well, Jared has, I believe, 10 more on order that's being made right now. And he wants to go out someday this week and look at locations, so...
Do we, are we gonna do what we talked, so the 10 you have ordered, they're not specifically identified for certain streets?
Yes, they are.
Oh, they are?
They're already sponsored.
Yeah.
How much are they, do you know, sponsored?
They're approximately $500, I think around $490 or something.
Yeah, yeah. Be nice if we could get, in my head, I'd like to see the whole down, you know, like the whole section in a row, so you can see, you know, if we could find the money to buy, you know, or someone was kind enough to want to make a donation.
I'm, I'm kinda hoping to the, actually, it got a little larger quicker than I thought it would with people participating, but I only hope that maybe some organizations jump aboard, maybe some of the clubs or whatever type of organization, you know, get aboard and buy one and invest in their community, I think it would be...
It really, really would be nice.
Classic. So, in answer to your question, in about another month or so, there should be approximately 20 up.
Wow.
Throughout time.
Yeah, they are short lived. They are, Wayne.
Can you imagine how cool that would be for the railroad, you know, like the...
Yeah.
Riding down Main Street or down Jefferson or Legionnaire?
No, are they, are they generating, like, so the $500 that you donate, is that, is there some of that money that's going back into the revival?
The way I understand it, that covers the cost.
Yeah, pretty much even down to cement.
Yeah, it is not a moneymaker, because we wanted to keep the price affordable.
Yeah, that's enough, I don't think you'd get any...
And we have some people, I know you said you had a lady come in here one day wanting to do something for a deceased member of her family, and just, you know, you get the plaque on there, yeah.
Yeah, if people see them up here, it's more likely.
I think so. I've had people ask me about them, and that's what I thought it was, 500, so, and I'm sure it's on the website for the revival.
Yeah, yeah, so they go to the plaque, and that's a little bit more, if you have a stop sign, it's a little more, I mean, it's all, but they might, it's not a way that I would raise.
Anything else for the good of the order? Everyone have a nice Fourth of July. Yes, Mr. Baldwin?
I'm gonna really throw something at you and probably make a lot of people happy. I've noticed, I don't know if you've noticed or not, we live in a different generation today, your playgrounds are empty. Go ahead and drive any place you want to, any playground, there's nobody in them. And maybe tonight is sanctioned soccer night. Pay to play. Build that athletic field out there, figure it. I know the neighbors wouldn't like it probably, but I've looked at it and I see it, people walking their dogs in the street constantly. I don't fence part of that off and make it a dog park. I know, like I said, if you live on Cedar or Cherry, you would probably be against it, I don't know. I really don't see a problem with it, but I think it would be used and, you want to charge 10, 15 bucks a year or something for a permit, per year's permit to help pay for the maintenance costs. There's a lot of people walking dogs on, on liquor.
A dog park's not a bad idea, I'm not sure that's the right place for it, but I think it, you know, a dog park, and, and...
Like I say, it's the neighbors, you know, what would they say? But what I'm saying, it's something that I think would be used quite a bit, I don't know, because people like taking the dog out on their own grounds.
A few years ago, the foundation purchased a property at Memorial and John, and the foundation fenced it in, they had a few benches in there, and that all of a sudden became a dog park. And the people, you know, actually thought that it was, and they thought it was a great idea. Unfortunately, that wasn't the intent, but we had to stall it.
Well, it was the intent, just a farm.
Just, just some green space and park.
Is that where they threw the horses?
Right next to it.
It's a nice dog park area. I mean, it is a perfect spot for it. I know.
Well, shady is, yeah.
Exactly what you mean, yeah, where you mean, but...
Wherever you have a dog park, though, you have to clean up.
Not just a problem, if they're trusting people to take care of their own dogs, that's...
Ann, Ann tells me, and I know we're just going on, but Ann tells me that the stations that she put up throughout, that we put up for, they are used quite heavily.
Oh, that's it.
They're really used. People do use them and dispose of their pet, pet waste, you know?
The pet waste stations?
She goes about once a week and empties them all.
The majority of dogs walk, the dogs walk, I think, so, I mean, you might have your random here or there, but for the most part, I think they are. I agree.
Okay, guys, have a happy Fourth of July, see ya at the festivities.